Mr. Espinoza, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You'll remain standing, or just a brief moment of silence. Veterans' Day has just passed, and it was a great celebration of the number of veterans that have passed, and the number of veterans that are presently serving, and the number of veterans that live within our community and their families that, you know, took a blunt of keeping our community, our world as we know it, free. So, a brief moment of silence in memory of those veterans that have passed, and those veterans that continue to suffer. Thank you. Next is our approval of the agenda. Councilors, I'd like to make one recommendation that on item 10A, that that item be deleted from the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, if we could just table that item?
That item could be tabled. Okay, that's a recommendation. If there's anything else from council? Seeing none, hearing none, do I hear a motion to?
Move to approve.
As amended?
Second.
As amended.
As amended, and a second as amended. Any further discussion? Not, call for the vote.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Peralta?
Oh, Councilmember Peralta.
Yes, he said. Okay. So, approval of the minutes, October 21st, 2014, special meeting minutes, council?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, call for the vote.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
So, October 28th, 2014, regular meeting minutes, council?
Move to approve.
We have a move for approval, and we have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Peralta?
Councilman Peralta?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
We go on to awards and recognition, Employee of the Month, presentation of a certificate. He's on a call right now, I don't know if we want to move this, we can move this to the, down the agenda a little ways, I think he just got a call. We need a motion to move this item.
Move it pending Officer V. Hill's presentation.
Presence, we have a second to that?
I'll second that.
We have a second to that, call for the vote.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Okay, we have a consent agenda, councilors, and there is, let's see here, items A through E on, on number nine, and if, there will, there will, no, there, no discussion will take place unless there's an item that you wish to be removed from that consent agenda, council? If not, we will consider these as a whole, and I will go to item A, Resolution 1456, Community Development Block Grant Procurement Policy, under A. Under B, it would be Resolution 1457, Citizens' Participation Plan. Item C, Resolution 1458, The Fair Housing Plan. Resolution 1459, Anti-Displacement and Relocation Plan. And item E, Resolution 1460, Section 3 Plan. Council?
Move to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Except for item A, was that going to be tabled?
No.
Did I get the wrong one?
Yeah, the one that, the one that was to be tabled was 10A.
Oh, okay, yeah. I'll second.
This is none. We have a second to the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing, no further discussion. Hearing none, call for the vote.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Councilor Hahn?
Mr. Mayor, we had inadvertently skipped over Citizens Forum, but I know there's at least one citizen here who'd like to speak on a matter.
We will move back to that right now, Councilor Hahn, thank you for bringing that to my attention. So, move back up to item A8, Citizens Forum, citizens wishing to speak shall have the opportunity to do so for, will allow five minutes, no action will be taken. Is there anybody in the audience, please?
Councilmember Gonzalez sent me a message that he's also available by phone, if we want to include him on that.
Okay. Right, right here, yes, ma'am. And just your, your name for the record, and you might want to pull it, the mic closer to you, so that, thank you. One, one second, I don't know if the mic might not be on.
How's that?
There we go.
Ah, I've got the power now. My name is Linda Hodapp, and I just always, I wanted to encourage the council to always consider in their planning for new roads and redesigning, to have bike lanes, and bike lanes on both sides of the roads, so that we have alternative modes of transportation, and our kids can maybe get on their bikes and get where they need to get, so, just wanted to encourage you in that area.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
And Linda, as we move forward through the agenda, I know you're not going to be able to stay for the whole meeting, but what item on this agenda are you referring to?
Counselor, it would be item eight, I mean, item 10B.
Yes, I agree, 10B.
And that's the?
Camino del Medio.
Yes, Camino del Medio, and that's the money that has been allocated to plan, design, and construct. That's, French will make that presentation.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it. Anybody else in the audience would like to speak at us?
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I received an email from Matt Foster on Monday, and I just remembered, he wanted me to forward it to the mayor and council, and it was also regarding bike lanes, so I have just sent that to you, and you can look it up.
Okay. I know in the last couple of days, I've received probably 10, 15 emails on that same letter to the point about bike lanes in that area, and that's something that we will consider and look at. And again, it's all based on funding and how we can move forward, and we would love to see a bike lane, at least one, if we could get two, that would be great, but, thank you for bringing that to our team. Councilman Peralta?
Yeah, Mayor, if we could, I would suggest that, you know, as part of our plan, we have bike lanes required to be looked at, but I'm not sure that that is in the county's portion as well, so I would suggest that we would make a memo to the county to consider as part of that total design from Ranchito Road to Ranchito Road, that, that bike lanes be looked at as a direction to the engineering company.
Okay, well, French, okay, thank you, counselor.
Did you hear that?
Yes, yes, we did, and French made a note of that, so, we'll make sure, we're here, oh, hold on one second.
Mr. Richard?
This went to mute, how do you take the mute off? You there?
So, while they're reestablishing that connection, it's a collaborative venture with the county, so, Mr. Bellis will, and I'm sure French will collaborate with the county, but I think the bikers should also follow up.
I'm going to have to call them back. Sorry, we'll, we'll get him back on the line, one second. Councilman, that's the Del Norte Trails Group?
I don't know. I just call them bikers. They're wearing leather jackets, smoking cigars and stuff. Doesn't she look like a cigar smoker?
It's that rough Schwinn crowd, I'm telling you. Madam Clerk, could you make sure that that is in the minutes, that the council is directing the public works director and the manager, that we should contact the Del Norte Trails Coalition in regards to potential bike lane or Class III bike trail along the Camino del Medio project? I believe that's in their plan, and it would be a good idea to coordinate funding.
He may not know that he's disconnected.
Council, councilman will be calling you back in a second. Technical difficulties. There we go, we're back on. Here we go, so, was there some more discussion, councilman? No?
No.
Okay, so then we'll go on to matters from, from staff, and it'd be item 10B, grant agreement C5142104, New Mexico Department of Transportation. Mr. Espinoza?
No.
No.
Okay, there. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is approval of grant agreement C5142104 with NMDOT, for the acceptance of the appropriation, and it's referred to as control number C5142104, in the amount of $180,000, this is the grant that we will be using for the planning and design of the town's portion of Camino del Medio, and I seek your, your approval, and without any questions.
And, Mr. Espinoza, just wanted to, again, there was, this was going to be a collaborative project between the town and the county, I know you're just asking for our portion, but when we, or when you're going out for, I guess, pricing, you're including both entities and both portions of the road, correct?
Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
Okay. And the bike plan will be considered?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, yes, when we did our scoping report, we did include the, the studying of bike lanes on either side of the roadway, so, when the engineers put their proposals together, they take that into consideration, and before anything is, before any work is released on that, I will bring back to the governing body what those costs are to construct a bike lane, and exactly what entails, what it entails, and I will ask for your guidance at that point.
Mr. Mayor, French, did we get this straightened out between the county and us, that we are the fiscal agent for this project?
Mr. Mayor, Rick, no, to date, we haven't, I, after a meeting that I had over there this morning, I did go speak with the county manager and the deputy county manager, and they are telling me that they will be the fiscal agent for their portion of the project, so, that's the latest information that I've got.
So, are we still doing a combined bid for design?
I, it would be my recommendation that we do a combined bid, and that would require that we enter into some kind of cooperative agreement or understanding with Taos County, so that both monies can be mingled to have that objective seen through.
Mr. Mayor, I'd ask that that item in particular be placed on the agenda for the upcoming joint meeting between the town and the county. We don't, this is a bit of a change from what we'd agreed to in the prior two meetings between the two entities.
Okay, yes, we need to put it on. I understand we, at some point, were we not asked to be their fiscal agent?
That is correct, the county asked us to be the fiscal agent, it's my understanding that, from DFA, that nothing has changed at this point.
Okay, all right, so, council? We have a motion to approve, ground agreement C5142104, we have a second?
No, second.
We have a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none, call for the vote.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
So, we'll go to item C then, memorandum of agreement with North Central Regional Transportation District, Mr. Espinoza?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that's actually memorandum of understanding. I don't know, from a legal standpoint, if that makes a difference. This is an understanding that we entered into with the NCRTD, it's a, it's a pretty basic and straightforward understanding, and that is that the town of Taos will engage in providing local transportation services, which is the UNM Plauer Campus Route. We have consulted with Dr. O'Neill and her staff to ensure that we are going to provide the service that they need. In exchange for that, NCRTD will take over our Taos Express Route. There will be no exchange of money, however, in the agreement or the understanding, we will be turning over a bus to them at the end of our ski season, they will in turn pay us a depreciated cost of $15,000, and they will continue to provide regional transportation, and we will continue to provide local transportation services. We have already addressed this issue in our 1516 application to the Transit and Rail Bureau, and we will continue to support NCRTD with their applications as they move forward with this plan at the state level.
And, Mr. Espinoza, doing this, did we see any savings within our own budget?
Mr. Mayor, no, we won't, it will be, it will be pretty much a wash. And, I'm sorry, in addition to that, students that provide identification will be allowed to ride the bus for free, and we do have that resolution in place from yours back, so.
That's, that's wonderful to hear, and I'm liking what I'm hearing.
Councilman? None. Councilman Peralta, anything?
No, we've already had this discussion, Mr. Mayor, and with our means with the RCD, so I would support.
Okay, what's the wishes then of the council?
Move to approve.
We have a motion?
I'll second that.
And a second? Any further discussion? Not, call for the vote.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to thank French and Miranda for negotiating the details out on this.
Thank you, French, for, for that, I, I know you were down at the meeting, and Espinoza, I attended that by, via telephone, and, and thank you for taking it and moving forward with it. I know we have a gentleman from UNM, please. You might have to turn the mic on there, I think it's off, so just, there you go.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council, Mr. Bellis, I just wanted, on behalf of Dr. O'Neill, to express our sincere thanks for this. It's been a long time working out, we've honed down our route, and we expect to have some really, really impressive numbers of ridership. Just a quick anecdote, when we started this, three or four years ago, I believe it was, and, and especially with your help, Mr. Veroni, I was interviewing, doing video, videotaped interviews with some of the riders, and the first guy I, I interviewed, he was putting his bicycle on the front of the bus, and he got in, and, and I said, what, why are you riding the bus, and, and instead of, you know, driving or whatever, he said, I had to ride my bicycle, and I got frostbite on my fingers. That's how important this is for, for some of our students, so, again, thank you so much.
Thank you, and I know it's taken a lot of work from, UNM has been taking a lot of work from the NCRTD staff, and from French's staff, right here at the town, and, you know, we just want to get as much service, I know there's been a couple of studies of ridership, and that, and it's finally honed down to the ridership that we're going to presently have in place, and, again, it's been a big collaborative effort between UNM, or the NCRTD and the Chili Line, so, thank you.
Thank you, and we, we also, we, we forget sometimes, there are several hundred homes out in that area, excuse me, and, and the golf course, and we hope that it'll just be a really well-used route, thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Bill.
So, Counselor Hahn, I know you made a motion to, to amend the agenda, to bring it back up when, under the Employee of the Month, when the, that officer arrived, could we get a motion to?
And, so I'd like to move that we move back up to 7A, Employees of the Month, and ask Officer V. Hill and the chief to come on up.
We have a second to that?
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Hahn?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuntu?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
We'll turn to this Employee of the Month, so our HR Director.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, and Mr. Bellis. This afternoon, the employee recognition team has selected Sergeant Virgil V. Hill as November's Employee of the Month. Virgil has been an officer with the Taos Police Department since 2003, he's served as acting sergeant on and off since 2011, and was promoted to sergeant in 2013. He has gone above and beyond in the line of duty, he has an outgoing, polite, and positive-natured enthusiasm in everything he does. He has an excellent working relationship with his coworkers, and displays great dedication and loyalty to the job and his community, sorry. The town would like to congratulate Virgil on his, this prestigious award, and thank you very much for everything that you do for us. The employee recognition team also has two gift certificates for you, and so we would like to present you with this certificate, thank you very much.
And, and again, one of the things that you do, one of the perks that we do by being honored is you do get a paid day off, so, just so you know that, and we appreciate your service, I know you were running a little bit late, I hope you were out protecting and serving, so, thank you for, for being here. Thank you, thank you, Chief, thank you. So, as we move down the agenda, we'll go on to Town Manager's Report, Marketing and Tourism Director, update on hiring of Marketing and Tourism Director, Mr. Bellis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Willman Kuntu and I just left interviews all morning for Marketing and Tourism Director, we interviewed five candidates, and I think we had a couple of really good people in there. We're not ready to report on our findings yet, at this point, we have to calculate the scores and check references and do some other things. While we're at that, I also want to report that we concluded our interviews for Animal Control Code Enforcement, and had two really good candidates, including our fire, previous animal control and code enforcement person, Belinda Trujillo. I'll come back to that in a second. Tomorrow, we have interviews for Senior Planner, and on Friday, we conclude with the last of the openings we had for Planning Director. When we budgeted for these management positions, which include the Business Manager, Marketing and Tourism, I can't remember the others, I apologize, we basically budgeted $60,000 to each, with the idea that we thought some would take more money, some would take less. It was reported in the last meeting, and this is the reason I'm raising it, that we would recapture and not have to make a budget modification, based on savings that I believe the Finance Director reported when I was not here, for animal control, planning, and the Senior Planner, that we would not have to adjust the budget to account for the shortfall in GRTs that occurred during the first two months of the year, which roughly netted out to be about $150,000. I guess what I'm going to ask is that, right now, occasionally I do animal control, but for the most part, we're referring people to the county, and they have been taking care of it. I know that the animal activists are not happy with that situation, they believe that there should be a full-time animal control officer. In reviewing it, we have moved the code enforcement responsibilities already to the building official, which is something I did at the county, and it worked out very well, it meant that only one official had to go out there for usually what is a number of problems, also, the building official has the ability to act under the International Building Code on, on certain property violations that, without having to go through the violation system. But, I had hoped that we were going to have the meeting between the town and the county sooner, and that's been postponed twice now to December 4th, but I do believe, and, Councilman Hahn, you were at the meeting, and please feel free to chime in, there seems to be 100% commitment that, that the town and the county at least, if not the other municipalities, want to adopt the uniform animal control ordinance, we're just waiting for one of the committees that's reviewing that to make some changes to it, which I don't think will be all that controversial, but they are important changes nonetheless, regarding licensing and enforcement. At that time, it just seems to make sense that, and I think, again, all the animal welfare, animal services agencies agree, and it seems that the staff of the town and the county do, that there should be one animal control entity to enforce that. I'm, I'm a little reluctant at this time to go ahead and hire somebody, knowing that we may be weeks to a month away from coming to some accommodation between the town and the county, as to how that's going to be handled. the county as to how that's gonna be handled, particularly if that involves hiring somebody that would be leaving a job and then might find themselves unemployed in a few months. So, unless I hear some burning concern, uh, from the elected officials, I'm probably gonna delay making that appointment. But as I say, if we retain that position in-house, the decision is made, uh, by staff, and I've spoken to the Chief, that now that we've severed the code responsibilities, that the strictly enforcing the Animal Ordinance probably is best suited to be in the Police Department, where they can get, uh, most assistance and backup possible. Uh, Animal Control Officer frequently has to enter properties, um, where you have a hostile animal owner or a property owner. Um, we do not, as in some communities, uh, provide mace or pepper spray or a baton or any protective equipment to our Animal Control folks. Uh, and if we were gonna do that for liability reasons with our insurance carrier, um, I would prefer that they be in the Police Department and receive formal training in defensive tactics and have backup available. Uh, one of the other things that was expressed to us by the animal advocates is that, unlike the county, because our Animal Control Officer is not a, uh, within the Police Department, they did not have access to, uh, a police radio to call for immediate help. And this would resolve that problem as well.
Any questions, uh, Counselor Peralta, you still there?
I'm still here.
Okay.
No question.
Counselor?
Yeah, tomorrow, the four subgroups of the Animal Welfare Coalition, uh, which includes concerned citizens, vets, uh, at least one lawyer, and, uh, Four Corners and Stray Hearts representation. They'll be meeting tomorrow, uh, then we're gonna have a, or by tomorrow, and then we're gonna have a larger group meeting at 1:00 tomorrow afternoon that's gonna be right here and open to the public. Uh, we hope to find consensus so that Mr. Bellis and Mr. Archuleta over at the county can move forward post- date. I have nothing further to add.
And Counselor Han, is this mostly to, um, address the, um, uh, the resolution or?
Well, in part, the four committees are the, uh, uh, the legal, uh, team, which will create or has created a proposal for the town and county on a unified ordinance, and correct me if I'm wrong about that, Mr. Bellis, another committee for best practices, another committee for education and outreach, and the fourth committee for finance.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, do you happen to know the times of those meetings other than the 1:00 and where they'll be?
Just that the, the four committees were supposed to meet before 1:00 PM tomorrow, and our meeting with the collective group is at 1:00 here tomorrow afternoon. That was my understanding.
So, Mr. Mayor, for the benefit of those people that are watching at home or see this later on Channel 22, um, we'll try to obtain that information, uh, after the meeting, and, uh, if the clerk could see that it's posted on our website, in case, uh, members of the public want to attend that.
I've, I've already received an email about it. I didn't know anything about it, so, I didn't know who to refer them to. Actually, I think I told them to call Rick. But I will email that person back and let them know there's a meeting tomorrow at 1:00 here at the council chambers. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So, here, so then, Rick, I just wanna commend you for the forward-looking that, you know, we continue to, you know, in, in our budgeting process. Uh, we were very, uh, frugal in trying to set apart, um, a bigger reserve, and I think, you know, that's keeping us out of trouble, and I applaud you for that. I think that's well thought out. It was a very good move that was, that happened there, and I just wanna let you know that. So, and moving on to 11B, um, Marketing and Advertising Contract?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, the Lodger's Tech Advisory Board, as most of you are aware, has formed four committees. Uh, Council, Councilwoman Cantu chairs the Events Committee. Um, the Marketing Committee had met, and, uh, it, it's, it's nice to have folks that, in the community, that are that eager in getting involved in designing our advertising, uh, and I'm happy to hand that over to them. Uh, they were recommending, however, they had a concern, I think voiced by Market House and, and Griffith, Joni Griffin of Griffin and Associates, our contractor for advertising, that she needs to plan the spring campaign, and they therefore made a recommendation that they would like to see, uh, rather than the current month-to-month, which we anticipated would not go beyond December 31st, that her contract be extended, uh, through the end of the fiscal year. Um, I had requested a, if that was to be considered, that she submit a, uh, campaign, um, for what it is we're, we're trying to advertise for the spring. Uh, winter's pretty much already taken care of, um, as well as a marketing plan and a budget. And we did receive that, and I believe that's been attached into Novus under this line item, if you wanna review it. Uh, I did express to the LTAB Committee when it met this afternoon that I had some serious concerns that that was not an adequate plan. It was merely, uh, the same picture, same ads that we've recycled for the past three, four years. It didn't identify the demographic of where we're targeting people, um, and which age groups. So I have felt a little concerned about that, and, uh, Councilwoman, um, I believe the group agreed to actually delay this decision today until the Marketing Committee could meet with Joni next week?
Yes. Uh, I was wondering, though, as a councilperson, um, before we make any decision on that as well, if, if we might be able to get the finances by, from a month-to-month versus six months, which she should be giving us, so that, you know, we'll have that information for us to decipher through.
Absolutely. So, um, I, I would just ask, did that matter be tabled at this time?
Okay.
With no action taken?
Didn't look like it was, it didn't look like it was an action item on the agenda anyway, so, we're, we're all right. So, anything else under this, Mr. Rick? Not, we'll go to, uh, Item S.T., uh, Staff Introductions. Introduction number.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, I asked Linda Perry, our newest employee and Grants and Revenue Development Coordinator, previously the Administrator for Eagle's Nest, if she could attend today. Uh, I know that, uh, all of you have been busy and haven't had the opportunity to meet her, and, uh, if she could come up at this time, um, we'd like to present her with, uh, our ceremonial plaque.
I'm surprised.
And, uh, it's to Linda Perry, been appointed by the Town Manager as Grant Revenue Development Coordinator, presented at the regular council meeting, the governing body, Town of Taus, on this 12th day of November, 2014. Uh, she comes with excellent credentials, and I personally appreciate that she has the administrative background as well. Uh, I'm gonna rely on her expertise. She's also got a great HR background, and I know that, uh, Amy and I are gonna use those skills from her as well, and we thank you very much for being here.
Thank you. I'm just delighted to be here. Uh, Mayor, Councilmembers, Manager, um, I just appreciate your vote of confidence, and, um, when I was interviewing with Major Bellis, I told him I really believe that you are the power team of New Mexico and just delighted to be here and be part of it, so thank you so much.
So, welcome aboard and thank you for choosing us.
And I, I'd like to mention also that, uh, Linda has already identified a number, uh, two new grants that she is writing for us, including the forestry grant to have a stud, companion study to the tree assessment that was done for Kit Carson Park, and this'll be to the Stark District, including the Plaza, which has been a priority for the town. Um, and, uh, she's taken over responsibilities from Marietta for the, uh, serving as a fiscal agency for El Prado and, uh, Cuesta, uh, which helps relieve some of the role up there. Um, and, uh, she's been pretty active. Uh, she actually sends me an itinerary every day of where she's going, what she's doing, who she's seeing, and what she's working at. So, um, my thanks to her for joining our staff.
Again, Mr. Bellis and, and, uh, and Ms. Perry, um, under the New Mexico, uh, Main New Mexico True, um, logo, there's a, a grant that I think that we can go after for right downtown area to bring some of these, um, I wanna say musical festivals that we continue to look for money to bring here. Uh, I believe, um, um, what is her name? The Secretary of Tourism, Monique Jacobson, um, has said that she will support that within our community if, if we can just get the paperwork done, so, we've been waiting you to, for you to get on board so we can, there's another avenue that we can, it's a small grant, but I think it's up to $50,000, so.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of, uh, under D, other matters. I have a couple of quick, uh, items, updates. One, uh, that I need direction on, one is that, um, uh, the newspaper approached me in regards to the holidays for a two-page spread we were doing in there to sort of provide a master calendar. Um, it's, it's nice layout with, uh, Fidelitos in the background, um, so that people know of all the events that are going on, and we're trying to, uh, a, a, again, uh, Councilwoman Cantu is leading this effort to try to coordinate, um, the activities that have happened separately in the downtown and, and create more of an organized event that'll attract tourism, as well as be more appealing to our, uh, local folks. But the newspaper pointed out that in the past, we participated in, uh, declaring tax-free days for one week during the holidays to encourage shopping, and I guess I needed some direction as to whether we had an intent to do that again or not, and in particular to ask, um, Councilman Peralta, since, uh, he was, uh, on board when that was done previously.
I don't think we can do that. I don't remember it actually happening. Uh, the state is, and the governor, the legislature, the only ones that can create a tax-free day, and I don't believe there's anything on the books for that. But if there is, we could look at it. Uh, but I, I just don't remember. I know the request has been made, but, uh, we can't do a tax-free day because that's outside of our control because it's state tax, uh, gross receipts. So, uh, we can't, uh, not do it. Unless there's a provision in law that says that you can do it during that time period, so, we would have to do some research on that, but I sure don't remember us doing a tax-free day, except for the schools, and that's by, uh, state authority in, in, uh, late summer.
I wanted to thank you, uh, Councilman Peralta. Uh, that was my recollection of it too, is, with the exception of, uh, the one just before school.
Right.
And I think what they refer to as tax-free days really was, uh, businesses organized in the downtown, and they actually paid the tax for the shopper. It wasn't actually a, a forgiveness on the part of the town to do that.
Yeah, there could be, we could do an advertisement and say that, you know, that, uh, those businesses or list those businesses are willing to, uh, pay that gross receipts tax for their customers, in other words, give that discount to them, and do an ad to advertise that, that would be fine. I think that would be a good promotion for the businesses in the downtown area or across, actually throughout the, uh, town.
And, Mr. Mayor, if there's no objection, then what we'll do is, uh, we'll prepare a letter to be sent to the businesses, probably through the Chamber of Commerce, uh, suggesting that if the Chamber or some organization would like to organize that on behalf of the businesses, that we would participate by advertising, uh, and pay for that cost.
Okay. And, Mr. Bellis, and, and one other thing is, you know, I know at one point, uh, here on the council, we did approve or ask you to move forward on a, um, page or page and a half, whatever was needed, to, um, really thank the businesses downtown or in historical district for all they have done within our community and continue to do and the support they have given, and just recognize those businesses that, you know, um, that are downtown, that have really contributed to Halloween and to, you know, the farmer's market and, and the different events that have gone on there. And I think that was something that we, I think, was direction that was given through council here, and I just wanna make sure that that gets done between now and the holidays so they can, hopefully there's some benefit to it.
Um, Mr. Mayor, some of those businesses, we were gonna wait till after the farmer's market. Some of those businesses have reflected, but I, I believe the best way they put it was, "Well, if you really wanna do something good for us, why don't you take out a full-page ad and advertise our businesses rather than thank us?" I mean, would that be acceptable?
Yeah.
So that we will work the thank you into the advertising?
Yeah, I just want, I wanted to bring up that, I believe, as I recall, we had also voted on having, uh, free parking during the holidays as well. Have we not? Correct me if I'm wrong.
I, I believe Councilman Han was the only one in the end that actually voted for that. There were, uh, two options-
Yeah.
-that we considered.
And I think the option that we voted for, as I recall, was Option A, which was limited, I think, uh, three or four days over Thanksgiving and maybe a handful of days around Christmas.
And Option B was a blanket from pre-Thanksgiving through the New Year's.
So, I believe, does that ring a bell with you, Rick?
It, that rings a bell.
Yeah.
If you could, you know, maybe mention that in the-
I'll check that.
-in the ad as well.
Uh, yeah, I could easily be mistaken, but, uh...
I'm pretty sure that you hit it right on.
I think you were correct.
All right. Anything else, uh, other, under others, uh, Mr. Bellis?
Um, the retreat, which was scheduled for the 17th and 18th. Um, I'm, I believe, uh, Councilwoman Cantu has indicated that she would be at the NLEO, uh, in Washington.
In Washington.
And it's, I have not spoken directly to Councilman Gonzalez, but-
I did. I just got a response from him, uh, and he said he is gonna be here next week.
He will be.
Mm-hmm.
So, I need a, uh, decision as to whether you wanna proceed or you wanna try to reschedule that.
And, uh, and I think we need all to be there, Mr. Bellis. This is something that's being set up for all of us, where I think it'll benefit all of us, uh, you know, so that you're hearing from every single one of us so that, you know, when we sit down and we have this retreat, that if we're gonna give direction or if we're gonna, uh, lay out priorities, that it's coming from all of us so that all our priorities are heard. So, um, I, I, I wish you, we would've known your schedule before. I think there was some dates that was put out there and we, I don't know if we overlooked it or you overlooked it, but, um, we need to come to a date where we can, um, all be part of this, 'cause I think it's that important.
I would, uh, after today, I, I, this meeting, I will circulate, uh, some alternate dates for everybody, and if everyone could get back as soon as possible, so when I cancel these, uh, I can give the speakers that were gonna be there, um, uh, let them know when we would like them to come. I was able to negotiate with Blackstone Ranch that we could use that facility for free. Uh, we would've only paid for the, uh, for the food, for the dinner and the lunch, uh, and I'll try to find, uh, dates that they're open, uh, that they can continue to provide that offer to us.
Yeah, I had sent an email because I think the joint, we were trying to find a date for the joint meeting, and that's when I had said I was gonna be in, in Washington and, uh, on those dates, so, yeah, it happens.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Okay, so we'll try to circulate some dates so that everybody can, uh, get it on their calendar so we can all, uh, get this done. I think it's very important. Uh, so we'll go on to Item 12, Matters and Reports from the Mayor. Uh, Appointment to the NCRTD, consideration, possibly approval to appoint a member and an alternate to the North Central Regional Trandis District. And, Council, I just, uh, I've been sitting on that. Um, as the chairman, I would like to continue to sit there. I think we've done some great work. Um, I will be, um, leaving the county, um, here at the first of the year, and I am an appointed member through the county, but if, I mean, I would love to stay on that. The possibility of me continuing the chairmanship is, is a good possibility. I think we've brought a lot of service to our community, all the way from, all the way from Costia, uh, into Albuquerque, Chama to, uh, to Albuquerque, and I think it's important that, um, our community is represented, and I would just ask that I can continue to serve in that capacity. Councilman?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like, uh, to thank you for serving on that board, and I, uh, I'm not sure, is, this is just for discussion? Oh, okay, so I'd like to- So, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion. Is there an alternate involved?
There is an alternate, and in most of the other NCR, I mean, other districts that are involved, the other counties, usually they have somebody from their transit district as their alternate. It doesn't have to be. Sometimes it is another council person, but, you know, somebody that, you know, has a little bit of the knowledge of, just in case there's a question, because, I mean, in the last, I think, three years that I've chaired it, I think I've missed two meetings, so...
Well, we do have a transit director.
Right.
And I can't remember her name right now.
Miranda.
Miranda. Miranda, how could I forget Miranda? So, does Miranda's schedule and level of expertise allow her to sit as your alternate?
I believe so.
So, I'd like to move then that pending the council's approval, we ask Mayor Barone to continue to sit on the NCR TD and have an alternate of Miranda as well.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? None. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Cantu?
Yes.
Councilmember Han?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralta?
Yes.
Other matters, I want to turn to Councilor Han. I know that we had a pretty in-depth meeting with the, with the hospital advisory group. You know, it seems like sometimes we take two steps forward and one step backwards in that committee, but I think it is appropriate, you know, one of the, I just hope that we can keep focused and moving forward and not continue to bring up things from the past. I think the hospital board is being very, is becoming very transparent and getting the numbers and, and all the, I want to say, I don't want to call it stuff, all the paperwork that is needed to, for people to look at so that they have a better idea what's going on within the hospital, why they made the cuts that they did to stay alive, and now they're trying to move forward. And we did have Representative Gonzalez at the last meeting, and he did shed a little bit of light about, you know, the monies coming in, and hopefully these monies that are coming into the hospital will continue for the next three years. That's their hope, unless there's some new legislation that's going to be, tried to be passed, because there is some hospitals in the state that when this 1/12th of 1% was passed, they did take a reduction in their allotment. Taos actually benefited because theirs went up. I believe the combination between the 1/12th and the, and the, and the other fund is about 6.1 million, is that correct? 7.1 million. So, it's a big benefit to our community hospital. And Councilor Han, I'd like to just, if you have something you want to add to that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Councilman Peralta, at the study committee, we had a long meeting, I think it was last week, and Representative Gonzalez was there. Here's the short of it. Currently, according to Steve, the acting CEO and current CFO at Holy Cross, hospital's losing about $2,000 a day. The operating budget over the next five years is expected to be in deficit. There is very little money set aside for capital equipment. We explored this with Steve, and Bobby is, Representative Gonzalez, I should say, is very committed to maintaining for another three years the current relationship that we have with the state, where funds are leaving Taos County, and then in return, Taos County receives funds from the state to supplement the hospital. And as Mayor Barone said, that is a tune of about 7.1 million, which stops the bleeding. The concern is over the next five years. And so, we brainstormed a little bit. Representative Gonzalez is going to be advocating strongly for continuation of that payment schedule and is also going to investigate a possible intercept measure with the education tax that currently is going to the school district in total. Not sure that anything can be done with that in the immediate future, but over the long term, this was originally the hospital task, the tax that built Holy Cross Hospital, and then, once we built the hospital, we moved those revenues over to education. In addition to that, he's going to be investigating a state-funded capital equipment program for hospitals through the state legislature. In addition to that, the recent election is going to be freeing up some of the tax dollars that were sequestered only for indigent fund and effective July 1, 2015. The county will have discretion to spend that money where it feels it's needed most. It may be roads and infrastructure, it may be the hospital, it may be an educational initiative, but the good news is the county will have more flexibility with that. And finally, in addition to that, Commissioner Blankenhorn is creatively exploring how to make current indigent fund revenues in the county coffers work towards Holy Cross Hospital's benefit by supplying services to indigents that may help those citizens stabilize. For instance, a reading program may come to mind, or outreach with Holy Cross in some fashion. So, we have a number of issues. I think the really good news here is that when I say the, the hospital's losing $2,000 a day, that's down appreciably. And the bad news is, of course, that we're still hemorrhaging a couple grand a day. I would reiterate what the mayor has said about the Taos Health Systems Board being far more inclusive. There were a couple of board members at this meeting. It was a very open, honest, and frank discussion. And I think the other good news here is that we have some very smart, creative people working on long-term financing with Holy Cross Hospital. Notwithstanding the efforts that County Manager Archuleta, Commissioner Blankenhorn, Manager Bellis, Mayor Barone, and our own very astute Councilman Fred Peralta, who sits on that board, we have a good chance here at riding our boat, and I'm very hopeful, but we're not out of the woods yet. So, that's, I can go into much greater detail. And Councilman Peralta, I haven't had a chance to speak to you about that study committee, but there, there's my brief report. Do you have any questions, sir?
No, I don't right now. I do appreciate everything that the committee is doing, and we're trying to respond to the questions that the committee has, and that's one of the reasons that you're finding more information being put out on the website and made available to the public as far as what's happening by, and we're still having discussions to whether that'll be done monthly or quarterly, but at least it will be done quarterly. And we're going to expand it a little bit. I noticed in this last round that there was some information that was left out that I think is very important, and that is, and that is on the mix of our payers, that it should have been on the report showing where we get our money from and why it's causing us some problems. Now, the other thing is that here on my trip, I'm luckily to find out from my son-in-law that there's another program, national program, that provides funding to hospitals and nursing homes for Medicare that New Mexico is not participating in, but Texas and Arkansas are. And it's funding that is available, but we have to work with the state to get that done, but it would help support some of the shortfall that we're getting now in Medicaid. So, I'll be bringing that information back with me, and we'll start working on that as a, an initiative, and we'll talk to our representatives to help with that.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, council. Anything else? So, under other matters, from the mayor, I don't have any other matters. We have matters and reports from the council. Councilman Han?
And I've just rushed from one meeting to the next. So, I'm looking at my notes on landfill. Marietta, French, Manager Bellis, and the landfill board are more aggressively looking at the automated non-cash payment system. It's going to take some time there. See if I can read my writing here. I guess Conrad's going to be involved in this, is Conrad still here? Anything you want to add to that, Mr. Bellis?
Just, and again, Councilman Peralta's input would be helpful on this, but we seem to have these repeated findings in regards to the landfill and cash handling out there. And we started looking at updating the software, and then that meant we had to update the in-code software. We're talking tens of thousands of dollars, and then putting a punch card system in. And in case you're not aware, currently, if you have your customer of the towns for water and/or sewer, you get 2,000 pounds free, and it's kind of a record-keeping nightmare over there because some people go over. But there's only apparently 400 people that use this, and I was wondering if there was any receptivity on the part of the council to eliminating this feature, because what happens is, it's not free. The town actually pays the regional landfill for everything that's taken out there. So, what happens is, the 6,000 taxpayers of the town subsidize those 400 people to take that trash out there.
I would think that we probably should do away with that, and everybody who takes trash out there needs to pay for it, just, you know, just like anybody commercially taking stuff out there. And it's not that big of an expense. You've got 400 people, you know, it's not an awful lot of money, but I don't think it should be subsidized. The second thing, though, is that we do need to get our act together as far as being able to ensure that we're getting, we're keeping proper records and we're making proper control over what goes out there. And it's very simple, if we can automate it, to have people just have it added to their, to their bill as far as the town is concerned. And for the county residents, that was something that can work out with the county commission, but it's probably a discussion we need to have with them in our joint meeting.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman. That's, that's exactly what, the way we're pursuing. I have finance and IT looking at either an additional software module to in-code or an adaptive program that we can put on there that registers everything from the scales on out, and for our commercial haulers to do an EZ Pass-type system, which automatically registers the truck and the load and handles that all automatically as they come across the scale.
Right. And that was a recommendation also coming from the audit committee.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilor. That's it from landfill. Then, as far as intergovernmental, our legislative luncheon is scheduled for Monday, December 4th at noon. I've got to get together with Manager Bellis, hoping to do that right after this meeting to iron out a few details. Essentially, we get two free tickets to that lunch, and the rest of us get to pay 25, 25 smackers. So, I'll just turn to Rick, and we'll, we'll see what happens there. The one thing we do need to do that Rick and I will talk about is establish for the IGC the town's top three priorities to act as a little advertisement on all of the legislators' lunch tables so that they can see that. And I'll go over that with Rick here, and then if he feels it needs to come back to the council, that's fine. The problem is, we're coming up against the deadline of December 1st for the lunch, and I think Tracy needs to hear pretty quickly what everybody's priorities are. It's not that we're behind the curve on this, or you could say, everybody in the IGC is behind the curve on this. And then we need to prepare for the January 21th Roundhouse Day with the Enchanted Circle. I'll talk to Rick about that as well. Call me if you've got questions. Again, I just flew from that meeting, so I'm just going from notes. The bad news is, there's only two free tickets.
Mayor, council, would it be okay to presume, since we don't have another meeting prior to, oh, yes, we do, 25th? Okay. Well, then, I'll put it on the agenda, but in general, we'll presume that the ICIP priorities that you provided earlier in the year will serve as our legislative priorities, but we can formalize that on the 25th?
Sounds good to me. Great.
Yeah, and there's three things I want to bring up. One of them is, I would like Manager Bellis, if you could follow up with the Department of Transportation to see about the lights and the possibility of putting streetlights south of Plaza del Canyon so people won't be getting hit. I think that's really crucial, and I'm glad you're here, Anthony, because I wanted to follow up on the request I had made, I think, two meetings ago or three, about samples from the septic haulers that I wanted presented to the council.
Good afternoon. I did give French some pricing for all the parameters that we, I could find on our permits. So, I gave French, sent those requests to Hall Environmental, because a lot of those tests have to be done out of house. We can't do some of them in-house. So, I gave French the, some pricing for each of the individual tests. I'm just waiting to hear back from him. I have been getting random, you know, like pH in, you know, visual samples myself, and they are, they are looking consistent with what the conductivity and pH meter on the septic machine is, is showing. Little variance, but that's based off of different technologies, same pH meter, but each, each...
Yeah, it's just an issue that keeps coming up over and over and over and over, so I'd just really like to follow through on that.
Yes, I gave that to French, gave it to him again last week, I believe, giving the prices again.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, the third one is having to do with the Taos County Economic Development Center. We're going to be having TCEDC Week, and they, there is events that are going on all this week over at the Taos County, gosh, sorry, it's been a long day, and I've been in meetings all day long. TCEDC, they are having a big fundraiser on Sunday. They, let me read you what I have on their events here. Today, they had a tour of the TCEDC from 10 o'clock till noon. Tomorrow, they're also going to have a tour there as well. And then tomorrow, from 5:00 to 7:00, they're going to have a PBS film, Seasoned with Spirit. It is with celebrity chef Loretta Barrett Oden. Saturday, there is a free expo at Baton Hall on Civic Plaza Drive. They are also having a silent auction there as well. What is on there is kitchen and farmer's market, food vendors, community exhibits, raffle, silent auction, speakers, Wynona Ledoux, Ojibwe Nation, Native Knights, and environmental advocate Louis Henna, sustainable living advocate, Tusuki Pueblo, Loretta Barrett Oden, Potawatomi Nation celebrity chef Clayton Brass, I'm not real sure how to pronounce it, Brass Coop, heirloom seed saver at Four Sisters Farm, Tusuki Pueblo. Sunday is the big dinner, and that, tickets are being sold, $75 a person, or people can purchase a table. It's eight people, but you can get it for seven, and the total on that is $525. There's going to be Aztec dancers and a big dinner, and the celebrity chef Loretta Barrett Oden, who's going to be there tomorrow night, is going to be the chef. If you would like to purchase tickets, you can get ahold of Bridgette. If you would like to purchase tickets, you can get ahold of Bridget Myers, and her number's But Taos County Economic Development Corporation is, is the gem of Taos, and they have brought out more entrepreneurs, and they have given and given and given to this community. I think it's a project that's, their projects are really, really wonderful to support, and I encourage everybody to go to their events.
Councilwoman, what time was that, the mail on Sunday, just for the publics?
You know, I think Naleo is trying to ring in on my phone at the same time I have this up. It, well, the Aztec dancers start at 5:30, and the dinner starts at 6:00.
Okay. Thank you.
Aren't you serving there?
I, I was just going to say that. I have volunteered to be a, a server there, so if you would like to go out, I will probably be one of the servers. I will be taking your food out to your table and picking up your plates afterwards. So again, this is, I think, one of those community events that we need to get behind and really support TCEDC at this time. I know they're having a little bit of struggle, and hopefully we can help them out. Anything else, Councilor?
Sorry, the, the typing on this on my phone is so small, and anyway, I didn't need to make it sound confusing.
No problem. Anything else, councilmembers? Anything else, Council Peralta?
Just one thing, and I'd just like to thank the voters of the state in Mexico for voting for bond B and C. It's going to bring quite a bit of money to our community, so thank all of them for supporting that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. That is a great thing that happened, and we will move forward. I think we'll see a great deal from that, so anything else?
Mr. Mayor, you have before you the November, December meeting calendar and holidays. There is one item I would add on there, and that's on November 21st, the E911 Open House at the County Commission Chambers, and then there'll be tours of the, the new center above the jail. And that's from 2:00 to 6:00 PM, anytime you want to come over there. And I strongly recommend the elected officials take advantage of that, as well as the members of the public. Public has invested a lot of money into that. And the switch-over date still is on track for December 3rd.
December 3rd?
Correct.
Rick, I thought that was 10 to 12 for the Command Center on the 21st of November. What do you have?
I have the 21st, yes.
And 10 to 12?
And let me just check, I just sent, Amity has 2:00 to 6:00 PM, but I will double-check on that for you.
Where do we meet? Over at the county, or?
Yeah, at the county commission chambers.
County Commission Chambers. Thank you, sir. Couple of quick notes. The Taos Valley Asakeas Association is holding a statewide convention of asakeas here at the Sagebrush this Saturday, also, from 9:00 to 4:00. And there are going to be children's activities as well. And the intergovernmental, Enchanted Circle, IGC, we had established priorities of concerns about Questa and the mine, Holy Cross Hospital, infrastructure, and education. We're kind of fine-tuning that into one message that perhaps the managers can talk about if necessary, but basically, it's going to revolve around economic development, and specifically, how we can help Questa laid-off miners obtain more education regarding workforce development, CDL licenses, IT. There's a need for water treatment plant operators up there in Questa, and no one's, or there are very few people that are trained, other initiatives like that. And collaborate, or coordinate that with an open space initiative and the National Monument. So the IGC is trying to be all-inclusive, with kind of a focus on, on the north, on Questa, which is, I think, really, really important, that we Vicenos help each other in times of stress. And with 300 miners out of work, and a reclamation project soon to start, there's hope, but collaboration is going to be essential. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Han. If, hearing nothing else, I don't, anybody, we'll go ahead, we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
A motion to adjourn, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, everybody, for being here.
Thank you, Councilman Peralta.
Thank you, Councilor.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Have a safe trip back.